...speak tonight, no more than five minutes and no more than one time being able to speak. So that's where the rules are, that's the ground rules for speaking. We are going to take this meeting out of order. We are going to take item number four first, and then we will go back to items... Whoa. Number two and three. So, item number four, can I have a motion to open up on item number four?
Second.
Item number four is a continued public hearing, case file number SP-25-008, special permit case file SP-25-003. Public hearing will be held at a petition of applicant Corvo Companies, 4 Porter Street, Stoughton, Mass. Request a site plan review under section 10.6 to construct a three-story, 52,515-square-foot mixed-use building consisting of 43 apartments and 1,220 square feet of retail space with parking, landscaping, drainage, and other site improvements. The special permit request is per section 3.1.4.8.10 to allow mixed-use building in the general business zoning district and to allow for a parking waiver per section 6.1.9. The property is located at 576 Pleasant Street, assessors map 68, lot 188 in the general business zoning district. This meeting has been continued since, from October 9th, '25. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strong Point Engineering, representing 576 Pleasant Street. With me tonight is Anthony Rosito, the applicant, and attorney Mark Bobowski, and I'm going to let you do yourselves.
Attorney Anthony Malika.
Attorney Anthony Malika. We haven't met before. So, the last time that we were here, I believe, was actually back in August. It's been a little while since we were here. At the time, if I recall correctly, we had just submitted a full traffic report, and it was being reviewed by GPI, who was the Town's Traffic Review Council. They came back with a few comments. We've addressed those, and I believe we've addressed those satisfactorily. There were also just a couple of minor comments on the site plan, things like extending the proposed sidewalk to the sidewalk on Pleasant Street, things like specifying the materials for the dumpster enclosure and things like that. So, we've responded with all of that, and I believe we've addressed those comments satisfactorily. So, I think everything from a technical traffic and site plan perspective have been vetted. So, that's an update as far as the technical things go from an engineering side of things. I know Attorney Bobowski has some comments that he would like to make, so if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to turn it over to him.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members. Mark Bobowski, my office is in Concord, Massachusetts. What I'd like to cover tonight are two topics that I haven't... What I'd like to cover tonight are two topics that we haven't talked about, at least at meetings I've attended. Remember, there are six special permit criteria, and they are in not the right order, but they're basically pretty accurate. The social need for the project, whether or not the community actually needs this. Secondly, traffic and parking impacts. Third, whether it properly connects to your utility system. Fourth, whether or not it will cause environmental degradation. Fifth, impacts on neighborhood character, if any. And sixth, fiscal impact. So, tonight what I'd like to do is talk about the last two of those, because we haven't really had much to say about it yet. So, the first thing I'd like to talk about is neighborhood character. And I'll begin by, if I can stand and show you this... How far is this microphone going to go?
Microphone is anywhere in the room.
Okay.
But you have to carry it with you. There's an easel over there, if that makes it easier for you.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, perfect, thank you. Can you see this from that distance?
Yes.
Should I put it in front of you?
Well, it depends on what you're pointing at. About, for the most part, we can see it, yes.
I don't want to describe the people being... This is the zoning map. This is the zoning map. I'm sure you recognize it. This GB parcel is both the proponents' parcel on the left-hand side, and the other three parcels are owned by Grace Church. That's been a transaction recently consummated. We have some information to submit on that point. They paid a pretty penny for it, and I think that their plan is to do a large church on the property that has several hundred parking spaces on the site plan that we've most recently seen. So, that GB district is different than the ocean of residential use that you see behind it, or the highway business use that you see to the west, or the other multifamily uses that are associated with that on the right. Anthony, can you hand out the packet that contains the dimensional requirements for When you assess the character of the neighborhood, the first thing you have to figure out is what's the neighborhood? Makes sense. They're not all equal, they're not all the same. So, what we did was we identified the parcel here in yellow. The green is the school, a central part of a neighborhood. The other pieces of this would be other multifamily buildings that are in the close... nearby, and then over here, I'm sorry, the multifamily is in pink, and over here as well, and then these are commercial uses that are also in this rough area that we've identified as the neighborhood. So, I think, in particular, the thing to point out is that this is something that the town meeting voted for. It was a GB designation. It's not residential, it's GB. And you can see in the handout that Anthony has just given you that the dimensional characteristics of the GB district, which are in... What's the page number, Anthony? It's page three. There's a zoning table. The minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet. This lot has 66,000 square feet. The minimum frontage is 50. This lot has 90. Lot depth, 75. This lot has 437 feet. Lot width, 50 feet. The lot has 90 feet.
Sir, can I ask something? Did you submit this ahead of time? The only reason I ask is I would prefer that this was on the board or up there, or actually so it could be seen by, you know, the people in public, because right now the people that are online can't see what you're seeing or talking about. That's my only concern with this.
We can submit it electronically. I'd like to go through it tonight.
Yeah, you know, right. I just saying is that I wish it was done that way for the meeting, because normally we require things two weeks ahead of time for this fact, so that people can see.
Understood, understood. But I wanted the board to be able to get a grip, to take a look at this perhaps before you continue the meeting tonight to the next meeting.
That's fine.
So, we think that the neighborhood character is consistent with what you have asked for and voted for at town meeting, which is a classification of this as GB land, and multifamily is also relatively common in the general area. The pink buildings at the bottom of the chart here, of the chalk here, are all multifamily buildings. The most important thing that neighborhood character brings to mind before I end a discussion of that is the purple. Again, this is something that is highlighted in the packet that we just gave you. Grace Church is...
Sir, we do know the Grace Church is coming. It has not been presented to this board, so I do not even want to bring it up or discuss it beforehand. So, if you don't mind, that's just something that's standard, you know, where it hasn't been presented to us, and we've had no opportunity to opine on it, or no opportunity to even say that the design that you're presenting, or that they're presenting right now, is going to be the final design. So, I think that that's kind of out of line at this point in time. I'm sorry, but that's just an opinion. I agree, you can mention that there's a church going there, but to get into the design or anything else, I don't think...
That's fine, as long as we understand that it's going to be a large church with a lot of parking space.
We do know that.
Okay.
I've been presented it, you know, at other meetings, but it has not been presented to the board at this point, so I don't think it's fair to discuss, not only for us, the public, or for the church. I think the church hasn't had a chance to present it, so therefore it's not...
I'm not commenting on the qualities of the church or anything of that sort, just its size and the impact it's likely to have on the neighborhood.
I agree, I agree.
All right. The second, I mean, it would be, it's kind of like a traffic study. If you have a known project, you must include it if you're a traffic engineer.
That's true.
So, that's as far as I want to go with that.
Okay, but...
Thank you.
But we don't know... I'm going to leave it to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
The other piece that we're going to discuss this evening is a traffic, a financial study, which was prepared by Mark Fugere. Mark is American Institute of Certified Planners. He's out of New Hampshire. Fiscal analysis is a routine part of a New Hampshire application for land use projects. Mark was formerly with RKG, which is a Laconia, New Hampshire, number-crunching firm, and Mark has prepared a report for this project here in Massachusetts. So, he's given you, and I'll give you an outline, of course. You're free to ask questions or read it in time for the next meeting. This is a 43-unit project. What Mark has essentially looked at here is local trends. He's identified the housing types that are currently present in the town, single-family townhomes, duplex, and multifamily units in that pie chart.
For the two of you online, I apologize. They're trying to find the equipment at the library. You know, I know everyone's there, but they... So, for Derek and Joseph, I don't know. They're trying to find everything.
All right.
And I don't know when it'll happen. I mean, they didn't let them in until like five minutes, 10 minutes before the, five minutes before the meeting started, and then, then they didn't have the librarian help that's usually there to help set up the screen and the owl. It's an owl, is what they call it.
Right.
They can't see it anywhere.
Hmm. Classic, right?
Well, you know, when you have to move to another building from the ones that you're used to, it's very difficult.
Absolutely. Yeah, well, we're not, we're not until fourth, so, you know...
Well, no, you're going to be first. They're taking you out of order.
Got it.
Continue.
I see.
Joseph, can you hear me?
If you will look with me on page five of the financial analysis, Mr. Fugere has presented an assessment of the estimated total property taxes that will be received as a result of the project.
I don't know when we're going to be able to join the meeting.
Yep, that's fine. If it doesn't happen, it's all good. Like I said, Nicole's there.
And you can see that he has reached the conclusion that the estimated property taxes will be $153,325. That represents a substantial revenue source for the town.
You were muted, Will.
It will continue annually into the future.
You're with High Point?
He's also in table three, estimated that the excise vehicle tax will add another $15,000.
Please let them keep talking.
No worries on...
Can they hear?
They can't hear us or see us right now. There's something going on with the program, so they can't, they don't know what we're doing.
So, adding the two numbers together, the annual total revenue from this project will be about $171,224. The impacts of the development are summarized beginning on page six, and Mr. Fugere estimates that the total costs for fire and EMS will be approximately... Can't find the number. It was a relatively small number. The police department, another relatively small number. All of this is summarized, all of this is summarized on page eight. So, the police department impact, about $9,600. Fire department, about the same number. It is the same number, and those will obviously have to be subtracted from the total tax revenue to come up with a net number. With regard to other town impacts, building, public works, school department, Mr. Fugere has made estimates as well. Ultimately, with regard to the 43 units, given the bedroom mix, he projects that there will be a number of students, and that the total cost from the enrolled students will be, the total number of students is estimated on page 10, and the school costs come in at about $95,000. So, subtracting $95,000 of costs from the number he came up with total revenue, there is a net gain to the municipality. And we think that in a time when tax revenue is really important for most communities, this represents a step forward. I would point out that, and I don't mean to belabor the obvious here, but I would point out that in the event there is a development on adjacent parcels, churches are generally tax-exempt. So, I'll just put that on the table for your consideration. So, that's the way we would cover those two things. I understand on water that the municipality has corresponded with my client about the fire flow question that was left unanswered. I think he's delivered an answer for that now. And Mr. Dirk, our traffic engineer, has communicated again with your peer reviewer. There were some questions that the peer reviewer had raised in a memo dated October 15th. If you'd like to go over that, we're happy to do it.
Why don't you review, yeah, why don't you review those, please?
Okay, let me, let me pull the letter out of my file, just a second.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, somebody from our traffic consultant... Hello? There it is. Somebody from our traffic consultant's office was supposed to be on tonight, but I don't think they can access us, so we'll, we'll do that on their behalf.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you have the letter from the top of what?
That is the response to that.
Okay. Do you have the letter from them?
They're quoted in there.
Okay. So, your reviewer indicated that there were three things that needed to be addressed with additional information, and Mr. Dirk has addressed each of those three requests on the part of your peer reviewer.
It would work better if I had this letter. I don't have this letter, I only have that.
Which letter were you looking for?
There was a October 15th letter from your, your peer reviewer.
October 16th?
Yeah.
That's right there.
So, GPI said in its October 16th letter, "Please provide truck turns. Please indicate how a passenger vehicle will turn around after using the drop-off area. And please show how large garbage truck turns will be made around the dumpster." I believe all of those bits of information were provided by Mr. Dirk, and the response letter here dated today signs off on that. At the bottom of the page, there's a number of other bulleted points. Please confirm with the fire department that they have reviewed the site plan. I believe that's been done. VAI's letter noted that the flush curb along the front door of the building will be replaced by curving. Please confirm that the, which treatment will be provided. I believe that's been done. And then, weather-protected bicycle parking areas also has been addressed in a note from Mr. Dirk. On the top of the next page, page two, your peer reviewer asked for a road safety audit for the intersection of Pleasant Street and Central Street. He also asked for countermeasures like restriping the white edge of the line along Pleasant Street, interactive electronic radar, and at the intersection of Pleasant, he asked for a "do not block the box" sign, realignment of the crosswalk, and a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. I believe that Mr. Rosito has had a conversation with town staff on this. Would you like to report the result?
Yeah, so, he didn't have the microphone, but the applicant is willing to agree to the request for traffic mitigation and improvement made in GPI's letter of October 16th.
And will you be doing the specific work, or will you be donating to a fund for that purpose?
We haven't figured out yet.
Okay, we're open to both ideas?
Well, there's a fairly large area from the lights down to Turnpike Street, if they're talking about bike lane and that type of stuff, so, which is on-town property, would have to be worked out how that would get done. Did you, I know you had the written responses. Was there an actual plan done for the turning radiuses, or how the truck's going to do?
Yes, there was, and we did submit it back to the engineering office. I'm not sure if Craig's able to pull it up, but I do have a smaller copy of it with me here tonight. Oh, it's coming up right now, so I can talk you right through it. So, what that truck turn shows, that is an SU-30 truck size, which basically is a 30-foot box truck, which is, you know, one of the bigger sizes, Amazon delivery trucks that you're going to see. Most of those things are quite a bit smaller than that. It's also a little bit bigger than a garbage truck. So, what that sketch shows is that we are able to three-point into the intended turnaround with the garbage truck or a larger truck, pick up the garbage across from the turnaround, pull back, and then three-point our way out, which is what we've intended all along. Larger trucks will make the turn, but they will likely have to more than three-point it. We very, I don't think, in Mr. Rosito's experience so far, that we get trucks larger than that at his properties.
I guess the only concern was about a fire truck, and they were saying we have to back, back out onto the street.
I met with fire. They looked at the plan, they reviewed it all, they had no comments. He said he was fine with his ability to fight fires there.
Yes.
I would ask the board to consider lump sum payment for the mitigation, again, understanding that I've got a giant purple thing that is coming, and I don't even know if these...
As far as mitigation goes, we'll get, we'll have to get to that next. That's it. Let's get through the meeting, and we'll deal with the mitigation issue.
I don't know that the comments that were made in the October 16th letter are germane, without taking that into consideration. I asked Mr. Dirk that question, and he said, in his opinion, we should rethink. But we're happy to make...
Here's, I mean, here's what I've done in the past, and you've got to get a history of this, when we've had several projects on the street. Each project stands alone, and then what I ask the developers of each project to do is if we're having overlapping issues, for example, street paving or anything else like that, get together and work it out, so you're not going, one's not going to ruin another person's stuff. But each one is owned and responsible for the work that's getting done, whatever we mitigate for them. So, at that point in time, we'll mitigate this particular site. The next site that comes along, we'll deal with that. And then, if both projects are going on at the same time, or one ahead of the other, those people can work out how they're going to get it done. But both, that way there, we're not trying to blame one person or the other. You're responsible for that. However you get it done, it's done.
Fine, that's, that's fair enough, and we'll, we'll either do the work, or we'll come to some agreement. Lastly, the letter says that transportation demand management measures should be taken, welcome packets, weather-protected bicycle parking, information regarding public transportation, and traffic coordinator should be appointed where amenable to all of those conditions. Thank you.
Anything else, Eric?
That's all that we have at this time.
Okay. Craig, you're up. Is there anything that you want to bring from the town's point, from the engineering point on this job at this time?
Yes, thank you very much. Sorry for the choppy start here. We're not quite used to this room and the equipment in here, but if you're with us, we're trying to get by with it. Yeah, so, we have gotten the revised plans, they've addressed the comments that Bill and I had in our technical review letter. The latest round of revisions had some minor tweaks to the stormwater management system, some revisions to the dumpster enclosure, things of that nature. We were really at the short strokes with that portion of the technical review. In my mind, there were, you know, two big items that were still kind of out there that needed to be addressed, and that was the water supply and pressure in the area. We have our water superintendent, Keith Nastasia, and consultant Steve Olson, who have submitted some information to you this evening regarding the water pressure in the area. So, they're here to answer any questions that the board may have about the impacts of this project on the water supply and pressure within that project area. The second outstanding item was traffic. We've had a response letter from GPI prepared, and Adriana Santiago is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have for her review. We have boiled it down to a number of things that we think will mitigate the impacts from this project, one being the RSA at Central. That's a road safety audit, so it's an RSA at Central and Pleasant Street to be performed by the applicant, and then the other bulleted items that were put into the review. So, some rapid rectangular flashing beacons at the crossing at Low Ave, some restriping of Pleasant Street to narrow the lanes to help with speeding. Do not block boxes at Low Ave, because that is an issue when traffic does queue up. So, these things will help traffic in the general area, and I think the applicant has agreed to somehow incorporate them. They've asked to submit just a, you know, a payment in lieu of. We're checking with our town council whether or not we are able to do that. In the past, we've had issues with that.
We have had issues with that, and I...
Correct.
And I know we've had issues with trying to get developers to do the work, but if we can get the developer to do the work on the roadway, I'd prefer to have him do what is part of his project. I think it's, it'll run smoother, and it'll end easier than us trying to get it done through the town.
I agree, we've had success with that in the past, so...
Thank you. I guess I would, first, with the, does the board have any questions for our traffic engineer at this point in time? While we're on traffic?
While you're on traffic. My question is, you want to re-stripe 138 down to 11 feet, and... I'm sorry, 139. And is that acceptable? Because that is a state road.
That was a recommendation from the town's...
It was a recommendation from our engineer.
Yeah, it was from your engineer.
My, go ahead. I'm surprised about that.
Yeah, so, Adriana Santiago from GPI. That was actually one of the recommendations from the RSA, from the Old Colony Planning Council. It kind of artificially narrows the width, because you'll still have the shoulder, so you're making the shoulder a little wider to make the lane a little narrower, to kind of slow down traffic going through Pleasant Street.
My concern about that is 139 is heavily traveled by 18-wheelers.
Yeah.
And you move that down to 11 feet on either side. I mean, those trucks are just over eight feet wide, not to mention the mirrors. You're going to have constant, I don't see that as feasible, and for that reason, I would not be in favor of that.
Yeah, I mean, 11 feet is a pretty traditional length with in the traffic engineering world, but understood.
Again, made my promise.
Anybody else have any questions from the board on the traffic engineer? Just for right now, until we have the audience, maybe more questions at that point in time. The next person, I guess, would be the commissioner for the water and sewer. I'd like to have him talk about what, you know, the letter that was sent to us, and kind of bring the public up, went up to speed as to what was, what you guys found.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before we move on to water, I'd just like to respond to Mr. Murphy's comment about the 11-foot lanes.
Okay.
We have striped other roads in town down to the 11-foot wide travel lanes, so I think Central Street, in the area where that shared-use path is, has 11-foot lanes, and I believe that Route 138, as you're going north and south, will be down to those 11-foot lanes as well in certain areas as a part of the state's reconfiguration project that they're doing now.
With that, I'd actually, I'll talk to you offline, to see what that is, because... With that, I'd actually, I'll talk to you offline to see what that is, because I don't see that as a favorable thing. Because, again, you're making it narrower, and again, eighteen wheelers, I, the other day, I saw two eighteen wheelers on one thirty-nine. And again-
Hey Derek.
Traditional twelve-foot lane, well, wide, so again, we can talk offline.
Yes.
They're, they're getting nowhere. Um, they, they, they have no, no one there with any expertise, they don't know, um, the normal people that are there. Is there anyone, are, are you the only person with, do you have one of your colleagues that's at?
Thank you.
Nope, it's just me, I'm just here, we're supposed to be here to answer questions, so, um.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure if he was talking about me.
Can we move on to the water, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I muted myself again, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, there's no one else there from, from our office. I'm, I'm only here, I was supposed to just be here online to answer questions.
Okay, well, they, they may have to, they may have to do it without.
There we go, let them yak, thank you. Could you grab a microphone and talk, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I have Keith Nastasia, Water Sewer Superintendent. You know, in addition to, uh, the developer doing, uh, a flow test, uh, that was performed back in, uh, June of, uh, twenty twenty-five, the town went out, the town went out and did their own, uh, flow, flow tests on September eighteenth. And our results showed that a static pressure and our residual pressure stayed the same to fifty-six, so there was no impacts. And that was flowing at one thousand sixty gallons per minute. It's a sixteen-inch water main that, um, this proposed development is, uh, seeking to, uh, connect to. Yes, there is lower pressures in, you know, surrounding area, but those are, you know, that area Oakland Street is off of, uh, a six-inch main. Where this, this, uh, said the proposed development's off a sixteen-inch main, which was a lot, uh, higher pressure. And it said there was little, little, there was zero impacts to flow. All in all, for the proposed development, sorry, yeah. Hold on, stats here. The total amount of units with the bedrooms and, uh, with DEPs, a hundred and ten gallons per minute. The total usage from that, uh, proposed apartment building is not even five gallons a minute. So with that, you know, it's hard, I'm not here to, you know, for or against the development, I'm here to be able to provide water for, you know, all the residents, you know, new and old. So I, I really don't have, uh, anything that's negative impact shown for this proposed development. And, uh, from there, you know, if, uh, Steve Olson, he's also our, uh, water engineer, and I'd like to have him, uh, have some comments for you.
Sure, I can just, uh, add to that. Uh, passed out a map, have a map up here. As Keith mentioned, um, they did four fire hydrant flow tests, they did one flow test in June and then, uh, three others in September. So basically, they, they opened up a hydrant near, in the vicinity of where the, uh, development's proposed. And then they put pressure gauges on four hydrants to see what the impact on pressure was, okay? So when they flowed the hydrant, both in June and in September, the flow out of the hydrant was a little bit over a thousand gallons a minute. That's a pretty good flow, okay? And basically, what they saw was for each hydrant, and again, one's on Oakland Ave over here, uh, and then the next three are on Pleasant Street. Um, and if you have the map, I know I don't have enough for every crowd, uh, everybody here. But we show the hydrant location, the elevation of the hydrant, that's important because elevation controls your static pressure. And then the static pressure, and then the pressure when the hydrant was flowing. And in each of the four cases, there was no change in pressure. So that, that's at a thousand gallons a minute, so that just means that, you know, uh, the pressures won't be impacted by a high flow. And as Keith alluded to, um, for a forty-unit, um, development, uh, the average flow will be five gallons a minute, but that's average. So we looked at a scenario, okay, let's look at peak flow. So if forty housing units were all simultaneously taking a shower, doing the laundry, and running the faucet, might be ten gallons a minute total, so that's about four hundred gallons a minute, give or take, which is less than the thousand gallons a minute that they actually simulated, which had no impact. Um, so that's, um, residential demand. What we don't know is what flow is needed to, uh, protect, to fight fires. So if the fire department needs more than that, then that's a different question, okay? And, uh, that's all we have.
It was, uh, and I, I don't have the piece of paper in front of me, but I did get an email from one of the residents, and he may know who he is at this point in time, that was, said they did some independent pressure tests at different people's homes, I guess. And now, and now we're showing substantially less pressure on those homes, and is there a reason for that?
So, yeah, I don't know the number of homes, but there were, uh, fifteen or twenty homes. And I guess the individual took static pressure. So static pressure means you're measuring the pressure when, when nothing's moving, it's static. And static pressure is controlled by the elevation of the water level in the storage tank. So several of these homes are close to the tank, so one, four of them on Oakland, uh, Road, somewhere on Pleasant Street. So static pressure is again based on elevation, so the higher you are, the higher you are and the closer you are to the tank, the lower your pressure's gonna be. The lower you are from the tank, the higher your pressure's gonna be. So these, uh, static pressures make perfect sense in that the homes that are up on the hill have lower pressures, the homes at the bottom of the hill have higher pressures, all right? And that static pressure's gonna be controlled by the elevation of the water in the tank. So when these pressures were taken, where was the water level? Was it, was it full, was it half-full, was it ten feet down? So those are some of the questions we don't have, but the, the results make perfect sense with respect to where the homes are located, um, and where the contours, the elevations of the homes are.
I've been hearing for many years, and I'm not sure if this is an anomaly in this part of town, but this part of town seems to have a lot, much lower pressure than several other areas of the town. We have, I don't know, four or five wells, but I don't seem to hear the same issues coming from the other tanks and the other wells in town. So I'm just trying to, how would that work?
I would think that issue makes perfect sense because probably the area, the, the homes that are complaining or having this issue, they're close to the tank, high up. So the closer you are to the tank, the higher you are, the lower your pressure's gonna be. If, if your home is down the bottom of the hill, you're gonna have higher pressure, because the water is up here. There's two point three-two, uh, feet per pound, per PSI.
Is there, is there a way of the town mitigating that issue?
Uh, you could, there are a couple of, I guess, ways. You could isolate a section of this, uh, just, so, the colors on the map show that the water mains, right? So you could close valves, isolate a section, have a booster pump, boost the pressure for a certain area. That's one way to elevate a pressure for an area. The other way would be to raise the level of the tank, get a taller tank.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead. Have, has any, all members of the board already?
Well, getting back to your, the higher you are, closer to the tank, the pressure's gonna be lower, I understand that. But you also have, what's that, is that a two-foot diameter main that's going on Turnpike Street that's above ground?
Um, is that the, is that a distribution main? Yeah, so that, that's a large, a large water main that's under pressure, so that's, um, yeah, it's a part of the-
Is that coming from that tank?
Uh, is it, so every pipe in the water distribution system is connected to the storage tanks, unless it's in a different pressure zone.
Right, what I'm getting at is also if that, is it eighteen-inch, two-foot diameter pipe that goes?
I don't know the diameter of that pipe.
A twenty-four inch. So if that's supplying, say, east of this project here, is that's drawing water, that's also gonna knock the pressure down, the people that are up on top, because that's actually acting like a vacuum.
So there's two types of pressure, there's static, which we've been talking about static, right? That was the list, when you put a gauge on a silcock or something-
No, I understand that.
So you're talking about dynamic pressure, so that's the pressure when water's moving, all right? So dynamic pressure is what we simulated when we opened the hydrant. So we moved water and then looked at the pressure while the water's moving.
It's the same idea as if you're up on the second floor taking a shower, and someone down on the first floor flushes the toilet.
Yes.
All right, it's gonna go and draw from the, the, from the second floor, because it's gonna hit the first floor first.
It, it's a similar, uh, similar scenario, and what, what the flow test did was looked at that scenario. So they drew a thousand gallons a minute on a hydrant on the lower floor, and the higher floors, they looked at the pressure. And the result was, the pressure was no difference.
And the other question, comment that I have is, on one of the test sheets that was sent out, you have a six, uh, sixteen-inch water main, an eight-inch water main, and there's one more in there.
Yeah.
You have a six, eight, and sixteen. So are those all coming from the same supply? So this project here, what is their intent, what are they tying into, the sixteen, eight? Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, my question concerns the, uh, project down on Turnpike Street, the, um, large, uh, distribution, logistic park. When that comes online, there's gonna be over four hundred people working there. Will that have any effect on this whole area as well as this proposed project complex?
It, it could have an impact on it, but, uh, they haven't come forward with what their use is gonna be yet. Uh, so they haven't supplied us with, uh, what their demand is gonna be. There was proposals, and, uh, those proposals went away, and they, they first asked for a lot of water, which, um, we were reluctant to, because it would have, uh, impacted our safe yield, and so that, that use went away.
Uh, follow-up question, when logistics park comes on, where will their water come from, from this particular source or a separate source?
All of our distribution is, you know, it's all looped, you can't just say it's directly coming from, say, the standpipe on Oakland Street. And it all comes from all our wells, they all tie in together. Yeah, primary areas, it will feed, you know, um, you know, in that area. But there's always backups, like, we have wells, sometimes we have to, we have to put them down to do maintenance on it. It's, it's not the residents are without water for the day, the water, everything is looped together, so water comes, you know, it's just, it's pressure that's there, and it just keeps, keeps moving.
Thank you. Just, just one comment, um, an individual homeowner, uh, that's having an issue with water pressure, the, the supply is there, and they could actually put a booster pump in their own house to, uh, increase their water pressure.
Yes, they could.
One other, can you explain the difference between pressure and volume?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, the pressure is, you know, basically what, what's in the pipe. That, um, you know, it's a fifty-six PSI in, uh, in that eighteen-inch main, that's, uh, constant. Volume is the demand that's out there, what, what is a proposed, or what is a unit gonna, what is their demand gonna be? Like I said, we discussed, uh, briefly, uh, logistic parks, what is their demand gonna be, if they're gonna be, you know, um, some kind of, you know, just say vegetable garden, they, they could have a large demand for water. Or if it was a thousand units of apartments, it'd be a very large demand. Um, with this proposed, uh, units, I mean, the proposed, like, DEP guidelines, it's not even ten thousand gallons of water a day. So the demand is gonna be very low. The demand is basically what, what is, uh, the usage.
Is there any other questions from the board, um, either for either the traffic engineer, water engineers, or the developers at this point? We'll come back to the board again, but I just want to give everybody the opportunity. Craig, have you got any other comments you wanna make at this point?
Uh, no, not at this time. Uh, I think Bill can see and hear us now, so we can just check in with him and see if he's got anything to add.
We can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Bill, so at this point in time, we've gotten through the developers' comments, our water engineer and our traffic engineer's comments, and, um, Craig's comments. Do you have any comments before I turn it over for a public comment?
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to be able to see, uh, the public to be able to speak. Come on up, please go up, mention your name, your address, and, um, everybody, like I say, five minutes at a time.
Juan Fox, six two four Pleasant Street. I'm talking about the, uh, if I had the, the, the drawing, or the, uh, the, uh, the drawing of the, uh, piping arrangement up there, it'd be better, but. You can't hear me? How's this? Okay.
Would you want it, where do you want the drawing of the piping arrangement?
Yeah, that, that particular drawing, I have it here.
It's up on the, um-
Does everybody have this?
On the usual tour.
It is, but you have to look closely at it. All right, I have a problem with this test, it's the same problem they had the last test, is that they're measuring, uh, the, uh, hydrants on the opposite line, apparently. If we're talking about, there's a, there's a blue line and a gold line on here. The blue line's connected to the old tank with the rivets, the, the, uh, gold line's connected to the new tank. Which one is the MWR way, I don't know. But the blue line is apparently what they're measuring or did the test on. Uh, and what I'm seeing here is the hydrant number one is on the other side of the street, which on the other, uh, line, hydrant number four is on the other side of the street and on the line. And hydrant number three, which I happen to know quite well, because it's right next to my house, is, um, is suspect to be also on that side of the street, even though if you look at the graph, it says it's on, on the blue side. Because when you drop the water from forty to four, uh, forty-six to forty, and it's only a few houses away, if it's on the same line, there is gonna be an effect on the pressure. And, and you can't say exactly how much, but there will be effect, but it shows on this test that it's, it doesn't change one bit. Meaning, in my mind, that's, that is also connected to the other line. Therefore, those particular lines mean nothing on this test. Now, on the hydrant two, which is up on Oakland Street, and it shows zero, that could be on that, or it could not. It's very close to the line, so there's very little actual drop by the time it gets to that, uh, line, pressure-wise. Uh, so it's hard to say. It does tell you how bad the pressure is on Oakland Street. And, uh, and generally, the, uh, the pressure is, uh, it was talking about pressure and, and, and volume. Pressure is the force that moves the water, and if you tapped it, would force it out of the pipe. Volume is the quantity of water in the, in the, the pipe, and how much it holds between, you know, how many feet here and how many feet there. Flow is the flow amount, amount of, that flow going through a certain point at a certain time, which is pushed by the pressure to, to make it. And as it goes through, it drops pressure, uh, and that is what causes pressure, uh, the pressure to go down when they're running the test. So anyway, I'm having problems with this test, they say, I think they still have issues. Uh, I don't know how this, this drawing has been set up, but, uh, just the fact that the one, uh, on, uh, six forty-two, the hydrant number three shows no change, I think that that is also on the other side, and therefore, all of those particular tests are meaningless for this.
Um, excuse me, go ahead, finish your, what you're gonna say.
Uh, pretty much, I had to have a, just a quick statement related to the, uh, to the traffic. Are we gonna come back around to that?
Get your traffic, I'm not gonna have somebody come up again, you've got one minute left.
Yeah, the traffic, um, uh, there was a response by Alex, uh, Petropolis, who wanted to have his letter read to the group.
I will get, I will read it.
You will read it to the group? Because that's very important for him, you, you couldn't be here in person.
I will read as well.
Okay, and another thing is, uh, real quick, is that, yeah, uh, the lawyer was talking about, oh, this is GB, GB. Well, no, this is, this is a, uh, multi-unit, uh- Well, no, this is, this is a, uh, multi-unit apartment building, where if it was put into a, um, a zoning for multi-use, it would not be allowed to be put there. Because it doesn't have the proper frontage for that, it doesn't have the proper open space for that, it doesn't have to...
Sorry, sorry, I'm not gonna argue with you about the zoning, the zoning is general business.
Uh, it was just a basic statement I had.
I'm just saying that, but the general business zoning, we are meeting the general business zoning, so let's stick with the general business zoning.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that that's, I think that's, uh, that's a bit of a...
Could I have a response from the water department on what he was stating? Thank you.
Sure, uh, you mentioned the, the pipes and the colors and that. As Keith mentioned, the pipes are all interconnected, it's a network. And what you're saying is flow, um, so if you close a bunch of valves and you're only allowed flow in one direction, you might see some drop in pressure. But because everything's connected, water can flow in both directions. So when you're drawing water from one location, the water's coming from every location, which minimizes any impacts, which is what we saw in the fire flow tests. The four fire flow tests, one in June and three in September.
Is there, just from a layman's terms, I, I believe what he's making a statement is, is that all the hydrants are not coming off the same pipe. And I, I understand what you're saying, we're on a spider of network. Is there a way of us knowing and or verifying which hydrants come off the sixteen inch main that we're tapping into?
So, the map shows what main the hydrants are connected to. Um, and the existing hydrants are connected to whatever main they're, you know, whatever it is. So, we can only test the hydrants that are there. So, um, let's see, the, the blue one is a sixteen inch, so the flow hydrant's on the sixteen. I think hydrant three, hydrant three is on the sixteen, hydrant four is on the eight. And one's on the eight, and obviously the other one's not anything. So, I guess the closest hydrant that's on the same main is number three. And that, uh, is it a... Let's see, different elevation. It's, uh, twen- almost twenty feet lower than the flow hydrant.
Does that help you at all?
I, I have a question here. That hydrant number two is off of a six inch main. That whole neighborhood is basically off of a six inch main. Is there any, any relation to the fact that it's a six inch main? Or is it just elevation that you're saying is the issue with the, uh, static of thirty PSI? In residential, uh, thirty PSI? Whereas all the other ones have differences. So, so I'm just trying to get, to understand the, the difference in the sizes of the pipe and the, the, uh, static pressure that you're getting at those places. And, and my, my understanding from what you were saying earlier was that all had to do with elevation?
Yeah.
If so, so what is the, what is the true fact there?
If you look and compare the elevation of those four hydrants and the static pressure, you know, the numbers are all there, you'll get a sense of, um, the correlation between the two. So, the lower the elevation, the higher the static pressure. And vice versa, the higher the elevation, the lower the static pressure.
So you're saying that, um, that the pipe size has nothing to do with that?
Correct.
That, that static pressure that we're getting there had nothing to do with the six, the fact that it's a six inch line?
Correct.
Okay.
Pipe size would affect, um, when there's a lot of flow.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hanson?
Elliot Hanson, five seventy-six Pleasant Street. First, what I would like to clarify something, at the last meeting, I don't know if you can hear me alright?
Pull it closer to you, pull it close, pull the mic closer to you.
How's that? Okay. I'm not used to hearing myself, hearing aids. At the last meeting we had here, the petitioner of record had said that those, that lot that I was on, those trailers in back, I was engaged in the plumbing resale, retail business. There's never been a business on that, uh, property where I live at five seventy-six. And I'm not sure, I don't believe it was that particular part was zoned for general business, but I can't help thinking that, saying that I had a retail business, plumbing business, on that thing is kind of a fig leaf to get the, uh, change, change in the zoning. So, I'm a little bit, I'd, I'd like to make that plain. We're talking about water here. At one time or another, somebody was going to buy that property up back there, we're gonna run a water main up to the school. What is this gonna do to the water pressure in the school?
The, the lot subdivision that exists right now, the way that it's approved with the planning board, requires that line still to be put in. And we've not had a presentation before the planning board of what the new property is going to be, but I would, I'm gonna take the stance and say that that would be something that we would look heavily into to keep in the new owner under the same provisions that the previous applicant had had.
Okay, thank you.
That would also create a loop. And when there's a loop in water, that maintains the right pressure, volume, so on and so forth. Rather than it just being a branch off to a dead end. That's why it would connect up, that, that would loop it through the whole system.
Well, yeah, I understand that all of the fresh water is, but, uh, speaking of water, all of this water they use unless they take a little bottle, bit work to them, that's going into the sewer main, which I believe is eight inch. And that's going down to the lift station down on Pine Street. And that may, in fact, have to be upgraded, um, the lift station. And all this water is, unfortunately, is coming, well, going through the MWRA. Although, right now, I'm, I think, think we're not taking any water from the MWRA. But with a greater volume, we may have to do that, that's something to be considered here. Uh, like I said, five seventy-six where I live is always been a residence. There's never been a, a thing there. And I'm wondering about the traffic on Pine Street. Now we've got, we're obviously gonna have more traffic on here on Pleasant Street. But then it's gonna go either filter down here from, to or from, uh, Turnpike Street or Pine Street, which goes over to one thirty-eight. So we're gonna have a considerable, uh, increase in traffic. And they wanna narrow the road a little bit. Uh, I, I think that's, um, or if you widen the road, now you're gonna be taking people's front lawn or taking the sidewalk out.
They weren't, they're talking about narrowing the traffic lanes, not narrowing the road. So they're gonna narrow the traffic lane to be able to keep it slower. They were not gonna take any, any infrastructure from the road, they were gonna narrow traffic lanes. Make, make a wider shoulder and narrow the traffic lines.
Okay.
You'd have a white line along the sidewalk, and then you double yellow down the middle. So rather than the curb to the double yellow, you'll have a white line to the double.
Create a, create a shoulder.
Is that gonna improve things?
According, I don't know, that's the traffic engineers, that's what they recommend, that's what our town traffic engineers recommending.
Okay, thank you. That's it, I just, years ago, they were going to put something way up on Turnpike Street near Page Street. And it was called Shire Town, and the developer came in and he bought these houses.
Twenty-six seconds.
And, and back then, we used to call them blockbusters. Where they would take a section of the town, um, and just change its character totally. And I can't help but thinking, this is really a blockbuster. Putting this apartment complex in with forty-three units and a retail establishment.
Thank you.
A pot shop.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Steve Hammond, seven hundred Pleasant Street.
Thank you.
So I'd like to address a couple issues in my five minutes. First is traffic. I don't know if they have made their way to you yet, but yesterday and today, I took videos between five and five-thirty of traffic backed up from Central Street, all the way down past Pine Street. I couldn't see how much farther it was backed up, but that's two days in a row, so. Historic traffic studies sound good, but when you get out there, and I have to sit there and wait for twenty cars to go by now to get out into the street, it makes a big difference. And another forty, forty to eighty cars isn't gonna help that situation any, especially during that five o'clock to five-thirty range when it's backed up. Haven't seen many of the school backups, but we usually have them in the three o'clock range too. I'm usually not home, so I don't get videos of those. Secondly, narrowing the, uh, the road, um, all that does is gives you, gives the people a bigger lane on the shoulder to go around traffic. I had a dump truck take off, I was sitting at, going, coming down from Central Street, sitting to turn into seven hundred. I could, traffic coming at me, so I had to sit there for a few minutes. Or I had to sit there long enough for a dump truck to come down, go around me and take off my side view mirror. Um, so, so narrowing the road isn't gonna do anything, you're just gonna, gonna give them a bigger avenue for speeding around when people are trying to get in and out. My neighbor across the way has their mailbox, it's up on a mound, and you can see if you go look at it, where the cars coming around me are shooting up over their mound. I've seen cars bounce down the road after, after hitting their, their mound, right, well, they've had their mailbox taken out a couple times too. But, uh, so that, uh, so, traffic is definitely of a concern. Even though the reports don't seem to indicate that. Pressure, um, I think in those tests that you got, I had some of the best pressure on the street. I'm at fifty-four, I've been complaining about the showers and, and pressure that we've had for twenty-plus years. And I, I can't imagine what the people up top that, that are at twenty-four and twenty-seven are alike. I'd be, uh, I'd be more irate, I would think. I guess, in regards to, uh, um, the presentation about what is neighborhood, I think my, uh, father-in-law and, uh, who built the house that we lived in fifty, seventy-six years ago, always considered he was part of that neighborhood. When my wife walked up to Hanson's store, um, back when it was a store, she was, it was the neighborhood store. So don't rule out all, all the residential people around as not being part of the neighborhood, that isn't fair. That's all I got to say. Oh, no, one last thing, if I've got a few minutes left or any time left.
Got a minute.
The, uh, no, I lost it, so, okay, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Come on up, thank you.
My name's Lauren Conti, I live on Oakland Street. I wanted to add two to the, um, you know, the character of the, the area. And when on James Signet Way, that's one of the places in pink that were on that map, I fought twenty years ago to have that not go in. So, and they said the same thing, it's like, 'cause there was one apartment building already on the corner of Central and Pleasant. So they said, what's, you know, two more. So, but my main thing I wanted to talk about was, how many, I looked online, if I couldn't find it, how many one bedroom and two bedrooms, just trying to figure out how many kids are gonna be there and the impact on the DAW school.
So it's twenty-five one bedroom and there's eighteen two bedroom units. No, he didn't say that, what he, what he said was that there's the existing, existing apartment buildings that he has in town right now, which he has several, he has no, no kids in the school department, none of those apartment buildings are sending any kids to the school department in Stoughton. Now, where they're sending their kids, I don't know, but that's, there's other private schools, there's other places they could be sending kids.
So the eighteen two bedrooms could have from two to four or five people in each one. And if there were like five, it would probably be a parent or two parents and the rest would be children. I just, I'm concerned, you know, we've already gone through in town, the, having it now, we're gonna build another school and just the taxes going up and up, that's my concern. Is overburdening the DAW school and having to build onto it or tear it down to build a new school. So I just wanted to voice that, anyway.
Anything else?
Um, I wondered if the studies, the results of the studies and how the studies were performed, uh, that the attorney mentioned, will those things be available to the public?
That's what I asked him to do, we just received them tonight, so they will be put up online and be made available, yes.
Okay. And I guess that's it for me, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight?
Hi, Elizabeth Doyle from four four five Pleasant Street.
Could you pull the mic a little bit, there you go.
Sure. So, a couple questions. One, uh, traffic narrowing the lanes does not address there being more cars on the road, which is the complaint that I've heard, that I personally have and have heard echoed by everybody I've talked to in the community, everybody who's written letters, et cetera, is we can't get out of our houses as is. More cars, is going to be more cars whether the lane is eleven feet or twelve feet. That does not address the fundamental issue that we have. At the same time, what I heard when he brought up the potential of a church is we're not looking at things that are coming, which is fair, that, that time will come. But it sounds like Technology Park is also not being considered in this. It's been permitted, it's being built, we don't know what the water impact of that is because we don't know what they're going to be using. Has the traffic data for that been incorporated into what is expected on the road when looking at this?
My understanding is yes, because that traffic report was done and it was vetted to be able to put that project together.
And also the traffic, that, that has two entrances. The, the front entrance on Turnpike Street is just for employees. There's a back entrance that goes out onto Page Street for all the tractor trailer traffic. So none of that traffic will be coming this way. They have to go out through the back, in and out through the back.
But they'll still end up going down that road depending where they live at rush hour.
Depending on where they're going, there's, there's, there was a, there was a portion of vehicles that will be going up that road. What that portion is, we, you know, it's been broken up by the traffic engineers, there was a very large traffic report. I don't remember all of it, I did read it all when we were doing it, and, but there was a, there is vehicles that go up that road as far as that traffic report. But yes, that was part of, in what was incorporated into this traffic report, yes.
Okay. Um, and my other question is one, uh, of littering. There's already a problem there. As more cars go down that road, we're going to end up with more and more litter in our front yard. Is there any consideration of kind of keeping the cleanliness of the neighborhood as that traffic increases?
That would have to be a DPW issue, I'm not sure what else to be able to do with that. And unfortunately, I agree with you, we have a lot of, um, people that throw things out of vehicles, which I don't understand that issue myself, so. And, but that's just everywhere, it's not just in your neighborhood, it's a, it's a long ways.
Right, but as, as cars increase, that's gonna increase. And honestly, I've already given up on my front yard, I tried when I moved in. And every time I pick up the trash, more shows up, so it's not even worth picking up at this point. So...
Very sorry to hear that, that there's not something you could be, you know, that's...
I see this, I see the same thing and I'm on the other side of town. I go out for a walk every morning and I pick up nip bottles and put them in my pockets and throw them in my recyclable bin. You know, it's, it's, people are just slobs apparently.
But more, more cars through, more people through, it's only going to make the problem of keeping your town clean harder.
Okay, thank you very much.
Day five of fifty-three Low Ave, Stoughton.
Just bring that closer to you, please, thank you.
I heard you mention, you know, we're not gonna talk about zoning because it falls under general business.
No, no, I just, I didn't say we weren't gonna talk about zoning, we're here about zoning, but general business zoning is the zone that we're in. I don't wanna be mixing up and talking about other zones in the... I don't want to be mixing up and talking about other zones in the zone because it doesn't make any difference what other zones in the town have. That's what I said. I, we don't talk about a general business zone and what's allowed and that's, that's fine, but we're not.
Right, so mixed use is allowed in general business zone.
It is allowed with a special permit in the general business zone, yes.
Yeah, but this project violates the mixed use intention.
How does it, well.
How does it violate? I'll explain to you.
Okay.
I come from Westwood. I just moved here five years ago. I ran for planning board in Westwood. We're elected in Westwood to the planning board. We're not appointed. Okay? So Westwood, if you want to know what mixed use is, go to Westwood Station. Mixed use by even Massachusetts definition, the whole country's definition, okay, is a walking friendly environment where you can walk to the grocery store, walk to restaurants, walk to the commuter rail. That's mixed use. Now, the town effed up in plain English because they have one sentence that defines mixed use. One sentence. This is not a mixed use development and you guys are all sitting here debating this as a residential development. This guy comes in here, he's already built three or four of them. I just say the one by the police station, yeah, we can argue that's mixed use. How many are not mixed use? How many more developments are going to go within this town that are not mixed use? You guys are our zoning board, planning board.
No, sir, we're with the planning board. We're not.
Planning board, no, sorry, it could've started zoning and planning. You guys are our planning board, okay? Go home, look up mixed use. Massachusetts guidelines for mixed use. Because this guy comes in here and says, I'm going to put a four, five, six hundred square foot retail with tens of thousands, whatever, square feet above for, for apartments? Come on, let's not bullshit each other here. This is a residential development being smokes and mirrors under mixed use. And I'm looking, I just moved here five years ago. Okay? I just, I just moved here five years ago. My house is my largest investment. It's not your backyard, is it? It's my backyard. It's their, it's their backyard, okay? I live on fifty-three Low Ave. Come drive with me in my car and let's take a left on the Pleasant Street at three o'clock in the afternoon, four o'clock in the afternoon, five o'clock in the afternoon, six o'clock at night, so on. You take your life in your hands when you go to take a left. Now I'm going to double that, triple that because you want to put twice as much traffic on that street. I don't give a damn what these traffic people come out here and say. They're hired by both sides, so they're going to come out and say on one side what they want to say, on the other side what they want to say. But I, I, I love one of you guys. Come in the car. Let's go. Let's go down Low Ave at three, four in the afternoon. Let's take a left on a Pleasant. And you'll see you're taking your life in your hands when you go to do it. So now let's go further down the street where there's less visibility to take that left. So when there's a major accident, we all just going to go, oh, well, I didn't know. Nobody said it to me. Well, I'm saying it to you right now. I'm offering you to get my car, drive down there and you don't tell me that you're putting your life in your hands when you go to take that left. And now you're going to go further down the street where you can't see, you see worse than on, on my street? Like I said, I just moved here five years ago. My house is my largest investment. Damn right, I'll fight you guys on this one, okay? Like I said, I ran for planning board. I actually got out there, picketed, ran the whole nine yards. I know how town politics works, how BOS. They, they create their own little army, but you guys have a different. I think all these people, it's an opinion. Sitting in front of you guys is one thing. They need to go sit in front of the BOS because those are the ones that get elected to their position. You guys, they're the ones who'll be under the heat if this goes south. Not you guys. If we don't go in front of the BOS, enough people go in front of that BOS, eyes will open, they'll open, because guess what? Most of them want to be reelected, whether they've been on there for four years, eight years, twenty years, whatever the case may be in virtually every single town.
Thank you, sir.
Five minutes. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hector Granados, uh, five seventy-seven Pleasant Street. It's pretty hard to follow that up, but I'll try. I won't be yelling, but I'll say what I have to say. Obviously, I'm against this project. I live directly across the street. As you can see, their driveway will be lining up with my driveway. So we'll be fighting to get onto the road in the morning and back into my driveway, of course, in, in the afternoon. Do want to say that all these documents that were submitted, they weren't on the website. I checked before coming.
So they, when I, I brought that up already and they will be put up there.
Yep, I just want to bring it up for the, my record as well. So they will go up. Uh, I'll talk about the traffic study, the previous one, not the updated one. Uh, I do want to say that the property tax will increase. Of course, it goes up little by little every year, but this will do a drastic increase, which nobody wants, of course. Once again, yep, this is a general business zone. That's fine, but it's not the characteristic of the neighborhood. There is multi-use, uh, multi-use already. There's a dental office, I believe, down the street from this building or future. And there's also that cleaning service, family-owned cleaning service. Those are pretty perfectly fine cursor, cursor of the neighborhood. It fits pretty well. Uh, what else? Uh, the traffic study. So the traffic study done on July twenty twenty-five. It was conducted between, uh, June twentieth. Is that correct? Yep. So per the MassDOT, uh, traffic, uh, transportation impact assessment, it should have been done during the school hours. And it wasn't. Hopefully that was corrected in the new one. Uh, I probably, I don't think so. Uh, also, it says that if you look at the traffic study, it only showed three roads. Obviously Pleasant Street and it showed Pine Ave or Pine Street, uh, Turnpike and Central. What about all the other side streets? They weren't included. At least Low Ave should have been included as all those homes and then the Dawes School at the end, which has four hundred students. That should have been included. Uh, what else? And just the last thing, it says that per the MassDOT TIA, that if you reference a document within your, your study, it can't be more than two years old. And I did find many, or two, actually, where the study referenced a road safety audit from November twenty twenty-two and then a MassDOT Highway Division Safety Management Traffic Operations Unit from twenty twenty-one. So they can't use that information per the MassDOT. Uh, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Could we just get a quick response from GPI on the comments that we made?
So, starting from the, the, from the last one, so the TIA guidelines, the two years is for traffic data. So, you know, we can reference studies that have been done before as part of like our description of, you know, what's coming down the Pike, um, so to speak. Um, so the data was collected during, when the school was in session. So that was, um, that was fine. And your other comment was on the number of intersections studied. So that's really, you know, the, you know, we try to take into account the impact of the, um, of the use. So residential is lower impact than, you know, retail uses. So, um, you know, we try to figure out, you know, during the peak hours, where are people going to go? Are they going to go up Turnpike Street to get on, um, the highway? Are they going to go down? My understanding is that most people are going to go up Turnpike Street. So that's why those were selected. Usually the smaller side streets aren't just because of the, kind of the scope of the project. So for that, what else did, um?
I think that was pretty much what, yeah, pretty much what we're talking about. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. There was a young lady in the back first. Oh, no, you've come up. I saw you first.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Dr. Cindy Cushman. I live at five sixty Pleasant Street, which I am the largest. My name is Cindy Cushman. I live at five sixty Pleasant Street and I'm probably one of the largest of others. Um, and so my question is, and we're also zoned exactly the same. So that means that I can come here next month and do the exact same project. Does, is that, is that what this means?
I'm not, I can't, I can't comment until I see your project in your lot. I'm sorry, I'm just.
It's exactly the same. Look at the lot. It's exactly the same.
It's the same size lot, nevermind.
Exactly the same.
If you came before us with the same type of presentation, the same type of thing, I do not see a reason why you would be able to come before us.
Okay, and so anyone else that has a similar lot and similar zoning can do the exact same project in our neighborhood.
If you have a general business zoning, there's not many lots that are your size in general, in that area. But if you said you, if you're that, that size, I'll take your word for it, but.
Look at, look at the lot, look at the.
Excuse me, you would be allowed to come before us, the same as this gentleman is allowed to come before us, for a presentation for a special permit. We wouldn't stop you from doing that. That would be your, up to you to do that. Um, how this board votes eventually is, is up to the whole board. It's five people on this board. And this gentleman has to get four of the five members to vote positively for a special permit. So the same thing you would have to do. So if you would like to come before us with that project, that would be up to you at that point in time.
I'm making a point that anyone that has this size lot in this neighborhood can build this type of unit. That's, that's what I'm bringing, that's what I'm presenting.
No, what you're presenting is you're, the board has not voted on this project yet. So to say that, yes, you can vote on that or you could build that, I'm not going to make that answer. And you, and you're making a, you're making a conclusion that doesn't, that doesn't exist.
Okay. So as you had heard, time after time, there's traffic issues. My husband has personally been rear-ended and harmed and I've heard that from multiple neighbors. I've also heard water pressure. I can attest to that. We live it every single day. Littering, we live it every single day. So I just wanted to read from Google. If you Google, what does a planning board do? And the planning board is to ensure new developments are consistent with the community's long-term vision promoting public safety and welfare. And my question is, does this project promote public safety and welfare? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak? Come on up.
All right, good evening. My name is Ken Rubin over on twenty-two Bento. So I just wanted to, some of my points are maybe reiterating what others have said, um, water pressure, things like that. So in terms of the water, how would it affect like the hydrant, um, on Bento Street? And plus with the already low pressure and everything else? If there's a lot of pressure being, say, a lot of water being used at one time and there was an emergency and we needed that hydrant, what would the drain be in the hydrant having the main lines tapped? And, uh.
You guys could answer that question.
So is that something that comes back in the research or?
Do you have any, uh, specific details for that scenario? You said, you know, a lot of water from the hydrant.
Hypothetical, so i- if you have a lot of drainage of the system, the main line? I mean, I probably have, I think, one of the strongest houses in the street failing registering, I think it was thirty-eight or thirty-nine maybe. And, I mean, the water's already dismal in the house. But if we had a fire emergency in the street and they needed that hydrant, um, is that water going to be there in the hydrant at full pressure for the fire department?
So the best answer I can give is, I don't know. But what I do know is that if you, uh, open the hydrant here and that hydrant flowed a thousand gallons a minute, there would be no impact on these other four locations. That's what I do know. But the other, any other scenario, I, I wouldn't know.
Yeah, I mean, because then it would probably impact the surrounding streets around us, too, I'd assume. But I don't want to assume anything. I'd want the facts.
Then we need to have, you know, what's the flow and where is the flow and where are the other systems you're going to monitor?
So let's see, um, in terms of mass exits of apartment buildings in the morning, as everyone's already, um, brought up. We can't get out of our streets. They can't get out of Pleasant Street. You have a lot of cars coming out of an apartment building. What would happen when there's a, if a church was built and you have, um, a mass exit and everything else, entrance and exit on maybe a Sunday morning or something? The traffic backs up Pleasant Street, it'll start backing up, uh, Central Street and then that'll really back up Pleasant. No one will move. Um, that'll be a huge concern. And, um, again, we already have issues now. Now we have the police racing down one thirty-nine every thirty seconds. Someone's going to come out of here, one of these, um, apartment buildings or whatever, if something happens. We can't get in and out of our streets sometimes, worry about getting clipped. My, a police car come flying over the hill because there's an emergency somewhere down one thirty-nine or wherever they're going. I, I've never seen it like this. I've been there over forty years and all of a sudden the police cars are back and forth, back and forth. You don't know what way they're racing. You have to look over your head twice just to make sure you're not going to get clipped by an emergency vehicle. That being said, and I also question, um, I'd like to know from the developers, they're saying no children in the other buildings and they have multiple others. Where are some of the other buildings? What do these? All right. Uh, I won't sit and harp on that one, but, um, so, thank you, sir. Let's see, I just had one other one I was curious about, um, as far as the water tanks, if I may direct this to you. My parents live in the south side of Stoughton and where I grew up. The water tank is level on Ash Street and they have very strong pressure over there. Where we are over here on, on Bento, up in Pleasant, the water tank's on the other side of the street. I believe that's the one that's ours. Um, it's, we're a pinch downhill. Why is the water so, so dismal for us? And then we're going to tap off of that more. If, if they have like a level playing field and they have such strong pressure, I can't understand why being just even a little bit downhill, why it wouldn't, why it'd be so weak. I'm, I'm just going to leave it there for right now.
You're going to put the mic closer to you as you're talking?
Oh, I apologize. So I, I'll just leave it for there, for right now, but it's, it's, I have many thoughts in my head and I'm sure many other people do, too, as to some of these things being said and the research being presented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lucy Godridas and I live at one one five Low Avenue. Mr. Kelly and Mr. Murphy. We have Hibernian heritage, so we already have an innate hatred for landlords. I'm just wondering, are any of these things going to be condos or they're all rentals? Yeah, and to me that changes the neighborhood because, you know, you sign a one-year lease, you realize you don't like it for whatever reason and you leave. Like you're not really invested in the community. You know, I, I volunteer in this community. My kids went to public school here. You know, when you have renters, it's just not the same. So that's my point.
Thank you. Is there anybody?
Hi, my name's Pat Commerford. I live at forty-seven Robert Road. It's my understanding the logistic park traffic survey stopped at Pleasant Street and Turnpike and didn't go all the way up to Central Street.
I think it went up to, I, I think it went one more, it was beyond that. Remember, um, I don't have it written from, it was beyond, it was beyond Turnpike Street. I believe it was one level beyond Turnpike Street.
That's not my understa-
I have to go back. I told, I said earlier, it's been over a year since I've looked at it.
I understand. I just want to bring it because you guys will be. I understand, I just want to bring it because you guys will be considering this. And the future plans for the town and its development. I'm new to this whole planning board and everything, but I am part of the community, and I'm part of that specific community. And my notice or observation is, if you're putting rental units in, you're going to have more people walking the street. And if now you're narrowing the driving ability of the trucks and everything that are on the street. I've heard several people talking about the traffic as it is, you're narrowing the lanes, there's, there's sections of that street that have no sidewalks. And I drive that street in the morning every day, and I'm seeing more and more people walking from basically Central down to Turnpike. I'm not sure where they're going, I think they're continuing on beyond, but the sidewalk will go from the left side of the street to the right side of the street, back to the left side of the street. It, it just kind of zigzags, and if you've got pedestrians that are now renters, that are not completely familiar with the craziness that that street is to begin with. That's looking like we're looking for a little bit of disaster there. And the water pressure, again, I'm not a scientist, I don't pretend to be one. But I don't see how you can open up a hydrant, have a, and I might have my numbers wrong, a thousand gallon flow, and it not have an impact somewhere. That just doesn't, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me that you're able to open it up and there's no change in pressure, there's got to be a change somewhere, I mean. I, and again, I'm not a scientist or anything, and I'm not an engineer, but it just doesn't sound logical. And all I ask is, when you do consider the special permit, that consider the future of the town, the future of that particular neighborhood, and consider the impact. I'm not sure it's going to be a positive impact, a lot of the studies we've heard have presented, and I understand, they're trying to do business and get business done. But it's presented on a best-case scenario. And I think in, in these times, we need to consider options A, B, and C scenarios. Not just making decisions off of what are studies that are presented in the best light for a progression of a project, which may not line up with the community's progression. So for that, I, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Peter.
Just for the record, I do not base my decisions on my heritage. I base it on the facts that are put in front of me and the community itself, so it has nothing to do with my heritage. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? I said earlier I would read the letter that was presented by Alex Petropolis, which I will do.
Dear Members of the Planning Board, I'm submitting an additional commentary regarding the proposed mixed-use development of 576 Pleasant Street in response to the letter prepared by Vanessin Associates, Inc. Dated October 7, 2025, which provides responses to the peer review conducted by Greenman Pedersen GPI of July 2025 Transportation Impact Assessment. My comments focus on areas where the applicant's responses appear to minimize or misrepresent the existing safety and operational conditions along Pleasant Street, as well as the broader planning and community considerations. As previously noted, the traffic impact study significantly inter, inter present, or underrepresents the actual PM peak hour queuing along Pleasant Street. The applicant's synchro traffic model for existing conditions reports a 655-foot 95th percentile queue on Pleasant Street, Central Street intersection, marked with an asterisk. Symbol, I'm sorry, hashtag symbol, and a synchro output indicating that the queue exceeds the model capacity and may be longer than reported. Field documentation from August 21st through 22nd, 2025 shows queues extending to 700 Pleasant Street, approximately 2,600 feet from the intersection, and 1,150 feet past a proposed driveway, far beyond the model results. Despite these documented conditions, the applicant's future build-traffic model at the projected driveway levels of Level A service, with no queuing or delays, zero seconds of delay for southbound through traffic, and only 22.4 second delay for vehicles exiting the site. These assumptions are inconsistent with the observed field conditions and indicate that the model is not properly calibrated. This discrepancy undermines the reliability of the traffic analysis and calls into question the validity of the project impacts on both site access and overall corridor operations. The applicant's traffic consultant, VNA, minimizes the project's potential impact on Pleasant Street and Low Avenue intersection by citing projected increase of only 13 to 18 vehicles per hour. About one additional vehicle every three to four minutes. However, this frame ignores the cumulative and compounding effect that even modest traffic increases can have on already congested and high-crash locations. In a 2020, in a 2022 road safety audit, identified recurring southbound queues extending from Central Street intersection through Low Avenue, contributing to the rear-end collision and access blockages. These conditions already represent a deficient level of service and unsafe operating environment. The RSA predicted the proposed 43-unit mixed-use project and did not account for its additional residential and retail traffic. As such, the RSA's conclusions are likely outdated, and true build conditions would be substantially worse than the applicant suggests. In response to the peer review comment number 11, the applicant's consultants indicated that the site has been designed to facilitate ingress and egress for the largest Stoughton fire apparatus, and that of the apparatus will reverse out of the site. However, no truck-turning diagrams or swept-pass analysis were provided for commercial delivery vehicles, waste collection trucks, or other likely service vehicles associated with the proposed retail use. This omission is significant. Relying on emergency vehicles reversing out of the site as a design feature is not consistent with best practices for long-term operational safety. This condition should not be considered acceptable as a permanent or routine operational plan and warrants further evaluation and formal confirmation by the fire department. Furthermore, the absence of the design accommodations for other service trucks suggests potential conflicts with the traffic on Pleasant Street and internal circulation issues within the site. The applicant's consultant continues to claim that the Pleasant Street generally provides, generally provides sufficient width to accommodate bicycle traffic in shared-trafficway configuration. However, under MassDOT's Project Development and Design Guide, Chapter 5, Case 2, Partial Sharing of Bicycles or Motor Vehicles, this type of accommodation is intended for urban areas, suburban villages, or town centers. Where curbed roadway sections, continuous sidewalks, and appropriate signage or pavement markings, showers are provided. Case 2 is typically used in low-speed, lower-volume environments, and may require a design exception when applied elsewhere. Along this segment of Pleasant Street, sidewalks exist only intermittently on one side of the roadway, and there are no curbs on the opposite side. Bicycle markings or signage indicating shared use, the corridor also carries relatively high-traffic speeds and volumes. Conditions that are inconsistent with, with the Case 2 design intent. As such, characterizing Pleasant Street as accommodating bicycle travel under the standard is misleading and inconsistent with MassDOT guidance. This point is particularly important because high-density housing developments such as this, are, this one, are likely to generate additional bicycle activity along the corridor, increasing potential conflicts in an area that lacks appropriate multimodal, multi-model infrastructure. The proposed development introduces more housing units than any residential street intersection intersecting this segment of Pleasant Street, where queuing ends congestion of already recurring issues. Concentrating this level of density in an area with limited infrastructure and unresolved safety problems will likely worsen the operational performance and further degrade the neighborhood conditions. While my primary focus has been on traffic and safety concerns, I would also like another, like to note another broader community consideration. Although individual mixed-use or multifamily developments may not directly diminish adjacent property values, the cumulative effect of multi, of multiple large-scale rental projects can alter the balance of housing types within a community. A sustained decline in the proportion of owner-occupied housing has been shown in similar suburban communities to affect long-term neighborhood. Encourage the, I encourage the board to consider how this project fits into the broader housing mix and future development pattern of the area. Finally, I encourage the board to consider the implications of the applicant's approach to mitigation. A developer who minimizes or overlooks existing operational and safety deficiencies in order to justify a project feasibly raises legitimate concerns about their commitment to implementing meaningful improvements. The applicant's offer through its consultant to facilitate or financially contribute to future road safety audit or corridor improvements is vague and non-committal and lacks enforceability. It does not guarantee that any physical safety or traffic improvement will actually be implemented. It is an undefined and subjective standard determined by the applicant without clear terms. This approach effectively shifts the responsibility away from ensuring the tangible safety outcomes and towards offering a minimal, offering nominal mitigation that may not address the real observed deficiencies along Pleasant Street, response, along Pleasant Street. Responsible development begins in full acknowledgement of existing problems and not selecting modeling or narrowly-framed mitigation offers tied to undefined fair share contributions. In conclusion, Pleasant Street already operates under significant congestion and safety strain, and the project's analysis does not accurately reflect these real-world conditions. The applicant's responses to the peer review appear to downplay critical operational issues rather than address them substantially. I respectfully urge the planning board to review these findings carefully and ensure that any decision prioritizes public safety, infrastructure performance, and long-term neighborhood stability. Thank you for your time and consideration, sincerely, Alex Petropolis, 664 Pleasant Street, Stoughton, Mass.
This time it asks the applicant to come up. I think we're at a point where the, if the board could tell me anything wrong, we are close to a point where we could close this hearing? Is there anything else?
I have a, a problem with this whole issue here, and the.
Can't hear you.
I have a problem with the issue here of mixed use, and the true meaning of mixed use as legislated by the Massachusetts Legislature. Legally, I would like you to demonstrate to us how this particular development falls and, and, and meets the criteria of what they originally wanted in a mixed-use setting. Mixed-use settings, like the gentleman had described, fit into like urban settings, you know, mixed use is nice in Cambridge, it's in, you know, the, these urban settings, you can, you could, you could understand something like this being put there. To me, I can't picture this mixed use in a situation because of the fact that a general business zoning happened to be in this plot, which is, is totally, you know, doesn't make sense anyway, but that's the history and that's what it is. It's sort of like I, it's like a gotcha moment, we've got a piece of land here that's general business, and, you know, by the law of what's mixed use is, and if we go by the definitions, we could put something like this in there. I, to me, it just doesn't make sense. And I think it's, it's a legal issue, and I really would like to see the lawyers explain to me why I should vote for this to happen.
Can you just make a statement before we go, we can go down, I'd like to, you know, I'd hear from whoever we want, but this definition has been used and vetted with other lawyers, and we've done it in other parts of town, in other general business zones of town.
I, I understand that, but it, to me, it just.
Can I take a brief crack at answering the question?
Sure, Kim.
There is no definition of mixed use that's statewide that I know of, but municipalities do define it differently. If you were in Cambridge, the, the major development over on the, I can't remember the name of it anymore. They, they have a fixed percentage of new construction must be commercial, and in order to gain a residential portion, you have to meet the commercial, you get a bonus for some residential, so it's a very defined approach that Cambridge has. Somerville has the same problem, the same, the same definition. Otherwise, it's just a mix of different types of uses. So it's residential and it's non-residential. I've seen residential and industrial as a mixed use, we have one in Concord, at Beharal Street on the train station. I've seen commercial and industrial as a mixed use, but it's usually commercial and residential. There is no fixed percentage. I was in the city of Methuen just the other day, working on an exclusively multifamily project, but the, the goal was to get the city to see that they could change their zoning in a way that would move the city forward. And as an example, I used the DeBurro Restaurant, a family-owned restaurant in, in the Ward Hills section of Haverhill. They added 133 dwelling units and a Starbucks, and that's mixed-use development, it's not purely residential. And that met the definition as far as the Haverhill zoning ordinance was concerned. I'm happy to supply you with the article if you would like to see it.
I, I've read articles on it and stuff, I just, to me, this particular one doesn't fit what I would.
You don't have any definition that we have to fit. Mixed use is two different types of uses, commercial and residential, period.
Okay.
That's it.
Any other ones?
And I'm, I'm happy to address this with your town council if you'd like to, but I'm confident that he'd agree with me. Can I just say a couple of things in closing and in reaction? I'll be very brief. I introduced myself tonight and talked about the six special permit criteria that you have in the bylaw, which I'm proud to say I drafted. The, I want to go back through them momentarily, take a real short jaunt through them. The first criteria is, do you need this? Yes, the next item on your agenda is a housing plan, production plan, so you need the housing, period. That's the end of the discussion there. On the traffic issue, you've got GPI, and we've got VI, VAI, and they're two of the finest traffic review firms, whether it's for the developer or for the municipality, in the Commonwealth. And they're both in agreement at this point in time that if we meet the, the requests that are listed in the October 16th letter of GPI, which we have promised to do, and which you may condition any special permit with, that they're done. There, there's nothing more to argue about with them. On the utility connection, thank you very much to the gentleman from the Water Department, they were eloquent in saying that we meet the standards that they would apply, and I don't think there's any issue about wastewater. With regard to the environmental issues, our engineer has testified that the stormwater management program meets DEP standards and your standards. It also is a project that will not cast glare or light overspill onto adjacent properties, we've done a photometric plan to that effect. With regard to the issue of the, the neighborhood character, we outlined, first of all, that this is a GB district, as you've said, Mr. Chairman. We comply with every one of the dimensional requirements in the GB district. And this is a use that is also, at least with regard to multifamily, common in the area, showed you where those locations are. And then lastly, with regard to fiscal impact, it's unrefuted that this project will be $96,000 annually in the black, based on the work that Mr. Fugere has provided you with. We're going to put all of the things that we gave you tonight on the project website for the planning board, so that other people can take a look at it. But I'm, I'm going to ask a very pointed question right now, which is, do you need anything else from us? Is there any other item that we can bring you, because we would like to bring this to a close.
I'm not sure if any of the other members have anything else they would like to have. Go ahead, here's something to say, Peter, you're about to say something.
Well, basically, I'm going to reiterate what one of my board members had mentioned. This project, in my opinion, it's, it could be useful to the town, but in my opinion, it's the wrong place. Now, when they say that, you look at all the issues that it's bringing out, and more and more I look into the paperwork, and the planning and all that. It gives me a, it doesn't give me a warm feeling to support it. Number one, if you're going to have the units there, you're going to have the proposed bike racks and all that. Well, if you're going to have bike racks, these people are going to need a spot to ride their bikes. By riding, making the roads by 11-foot lanes, alright? Now you're going to have the bikes up and down Pleasant Street.
Now you're going to have the bikes up and down Pleasant Street. I saw this just recently, you see more and more of these electric bikes that are going up and down. Now what happens is if you build bike racks for that, you're going to have charging stations for those, and if that being the case, you're going to have suppression, fire suppression, because you see these bikes starting to go into flames. Now they set the building on fire. You know, it, it, there's a lot more to it than just what we see. And again, I, if this was downtown Stoughton, the hole in the wall that we put in there, if you had come then with this project there, I'd be more willing to go with that then. That's a nice building, it fits a need, but for you to go in, what's it, 1,200 square foot for a, for a commercial business, that, to me, it's the same thing down Atkinson Drive. Is that your building as well, right? Looking back, I kind of have some regrets about that, but I look at it, it's a very nice building. You also have 138 there, which is a super wide street. You have enough room to put bike lanes on both sides there. That tucked in there very nicely. This will not tuck in where you want it. To me, what you're doing is you're circumventing the system.
The bike requirements of the towns. If you'd like me to remove them, I'd gladly remove the bikes. As far as the suppression system, we do have a suppression system in the entire building.
But what I'm saying is, I've looked, and this is like a mile point three from downtown. So either you're going to have people driving, people walking, people coming out with their cars. You also, what is not in the report, all right, 43 units, a lot of these people are single two-bedroom apartments, they're going to be calling Uber, they're going to be calling, they're going to be calling Grubhub. I see it on my street all these Friday night, constantly. So that's not in the report. That's going to affect it. This is my opinion, and this is where I feel, no.
I understand.
Can I just address the 11 feet? And I'm sure Ms. Santiago will correct me if I'm wrong, but 11 feet is the Ashtoe standard for a traveler.
We've, and we've gone through that. I'm, at 11 feet, what the town is doing and where they're going, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
What I will say is, where my street is, I take, coming off of, coming from Randolph, coming up, I, I live on Peters Drive, which is central street leads into that. When I stop to take a left-hand turn, cars are passing me on the right-hand side. And again, that's the issue that these people are going to start facing. If you make that narrower, people are going to try to scoot around that. So again, it's, you know, it should be a no-passing zone.
Well, that, legally, that is a no-passing zone, Peter. That's an enforcement issue.
Right.
That's, you're, you're driving in the breakdown lane, it's an enforcement issue by the local authorities. We can't control that, but that is, but, but that's what the police departments want.
Right, but I'm just saying, that's the things that, the concerns that the residents are, are raising.
So here's, in order to, we could discuss this back and forth all night. I'm, I'm at a point now where you've, you've said your piece.
I've said my piece.
Anybody else need to say their piece? I'd like to get to a point where we're going to close this hearing tonight. We have several conditions that we're looking at that I think are written up nicely in the traffic report, the water report, put together a decision that we can either vote for up or down at our next meeting. But we'll be no public hearing at that point in time if we can close it. If that, if anybody would accept that, I'd like to get a motion to that in a second.
Motion to, uh...
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
This point in time, the, the public hearing is closed, and we will set up a time in the next meeting or two. I would prefer to go to the December meeting because I will not be here for the November meeting, and you do need a four-person vote to be able to pass this, so I would prefer that you had a full majority here. But that is, pass or deny, that is, that's up to you. If you would want to take it at the next meeting, you'd have to get a unanimous vote at the next meeting, so it's up to you how you want to go, continue this or this.
We'll wait for you, Mr. Chairman. When is the December meeting, if I might ask?
Bill, is it December 13th?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, it's December, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's December 18th.
Eighteenth.
We decided through the third week, only one meeting.
Correct, thank you.
And is there an opportunity for me to just provide some constructive feedback on the draft decision?
Let me see when we've added the board, it's been sent out to the board and we'll make a decision on that.
Okay. I mean, I'm more, you know, it's your decision and I'm not going to do anything.
I think Bill, Bill has a lot of information right now to be able to extract the condition that we can, each of us can take a stab at, and then we can kind of go forward from there.
Right, thank you. So I don't think that the November meeting, we would, there's no need to put us on the agenda.
So can I have a vote to accept their request for a continuous to December 18th? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
See you on December 18th. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to request a five-minute recess.
Oh, boy.
Got myself in trouble again, huh?
Oh, it is. Thank you. Does that look better? So here's Tosca Drive. So up here, this is what we were calling Building Six, and this is the last building.
What's the school?
I don't know. It was there before they bought the property.
I've heard rumors as to why it's there, but I don't, I haven't fact checked it out.
The rumor that I heard is that they're trying to connect the two buildings to follow one building.
That's what I heard. So that was prior.
Like a permanently wound though.
Yeah. Yes, Bill. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Can you hear me? No.
Uh, I can't hear you.
I think you're on mute, maybe.
Bill, how about now, can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Hi, how you feeling? How you feeling?
Uh, I'm hanging in there.
Good.
I'm, I'm better and better every day.
Good for you.
How do you get on the mic? I, I want to work some of it, but I can only go about 180, I, I can't do a full revolution, I can only, you can only go back and forth about 180 degrees.
It will come along. You're on the big screen, Craig just took you off. I covered you over.
Yep, yep, okay.
Motion open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have item number two, presentation, the draft housing, I'm sorry, you're not, no, you're going for Tosca Drive. Okay, I'm sorry. So we've got modification, item number three, modification to request SP 25001 Tosca Drive, six buildings project, to request it to alter the site plan in front of Building Two and Six to provide for proper turning moment and tractor trailers that currently use the loading docks.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Good evening, my name is Nicole Langley from High Point Engineering. We received approval through this board for site plan review for the modification to the site plan for the three buildings at the end of Tosca Drive and some previously made improvements for three buildings further down the street. After we received approval, the applicant hired Cassidy Paving and Landscape to start the construction, and we began in early August. As they were moving forward, they milled most of the pavement, and they cut out the sidewalk areas in the landscape design from the approved plan. As soon as that happened, the tenants of Building Two lodged complaints with the applicant saying that their trucks could not make it to the loading docks, which are located in the front of this building. They threatened lawsuits and all sorts of things about access to there. So, we met with Craig and Bill in your engineering and planning offices and decided that we wanted to try and come up with a solution that would address the trucks but still keep the town's goal of creating clear separation between Tosca Drive and the private lots. So, we came up with this plan, you can also see it up there. What we're proposing to do is we increased, where am I? Oh, we increased the width of this island here from about 15 feet wide to 20 feet wide. We're proposing to create open space area all along here, which was originally paved or overgrown brush. All of that will be removed, there's some storage items there that will be removed and replaced with a lawn area. To create the separation in the turning studies, instead of a larger landscape island that we proposed here, we're proposing to do eight-foot-wide landscape islands along the right-of-way of Tosca Drive, which will create that separation from the drive lane and the private property. And we're also proposing to plant seven new trees that weren't under the original proposal within that island. So this striped area here is kind of there to allow for the turning studies. I did provide you with turning studies in your packet, and there's actually one turning study for each of the loading docks that runs along the front of the building to show how we kind of came up with this design. What you also will see is in between the islands, we have four-foot-wide concrete mountable islands. This area is because the turning studies are very tight, and the tires of the truck will not touch that island, but it's very close. We didn't want to put landscape there and just have it destroyed, so you will see the mountable islands in between here and at the end.
They're mountable?
They are mountable.
I thought you said multiple.
No, no, I'm sorry, mountable. And there is a detail in your packet showing those. So that's pretty much it. The only other change that we did is we took the sidewalk that was running along the front of Building Two, and we put it over here in front of Building Six. So the new pedestrian access is along Building Six till you come to this crosswalk and it goes back to the original design. Is that quick?
Seems like a good fix.
Thank you.
In the area that, is that what I was going to create, like a separate lane, so to speak?
Which, which area?
Uh, we are moving the, you're putting the sidewalk out further.
Here?
No, I'm sorry, you're putting the island out a little bit further.
This island here?
No, keep going, raise up a little, yeah.
That was part of the original design. So that's part of the Building One improvements, and what it does is it creates a one-way exit for the delivery vehicles coming out of Building One.
Okay. Well, my concern is, is the, in front of, what's the big building right there?
This Building Two.
Two. There's people going in there where the trucks, if there's no trucks there, if they're cutting through, would they be going too fast? You know, or something of that nature?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, would it be worth it to put like a, a speed bump or something in there?
Would you be open to a speed bump?
Dennis Kenny with Berkeley Partners. Right now, there's no islands defining the right side of the roadway.
Okay.
So right now, cars can drive and do drive exceedingly fast through the entire lot area.
Yeah.
And if you know the area, also, at the beginning of our improvements, there's a jump, almost.
Yeah.
Uh, we're actually grading that down to get rid of that risk. But this design, we feel that the introduction of these landscaped islands will actually reduce any of that kind of high-speed traffic. Even if they're cutting through the lot, they're not going to, they're not going to have enough running room to get around the island and ramp up speed, so to speak.
It's not as feasible to cut through the property anymore because there will be, you know, a normal vehicle's not going to be able to mount these mountable curbs. Um, they are still about six inches high. Um, so I, I think it's going to deter vehicles from trying to cross over.
There's a situation, I don't want to get into details, but I know that, uh, this one shop and mall, people kind of cut in.
Yeah.
And it's not the intent, but people do it. But no, other than that, I have no other questions.
Thank you.
On, on the landscape design, um, we don't, we don't have like, uh, what types of trees you'd be using, but can I make some suggestions?
Sure.
That you, uh, stick with like columnar variety trees, like, uh, um, you know, columnar oak, columnar, uh, uh, betula, uh, what was the other one? I forget them, but narrow-growing trees, so that we're not having, you know, branches sticking out and trucks hitting those, et cetera. Also, um, are there any issue areas where the, the landscape will be burned? Uh, to, you know, discourage people walking over and stuff like that? I don't, again, we don't have a, a, a landscape design on this, so. And will, will these areas be irrigated? Because you're going to have lawns and, yeah.
Uh, the, the middle islands along the roadway aren't planned for irrigation, so we're going to have more hardy landscape features. Uh, we accept, you know, appreciate these suggestions on the trees. Um, but as far as, I mean, all the islands will be encased in curbing.
Yes.
So it's not like it's going to be overrun and then just...
Yeah. Okay, I'm just, you know, just curious, because so many times you see landscapes go in and, you know, they look nice at the beginning, but, you know, after a year or so, especially in an industrial area like that, it's nothing but dirt and, you know.
At the property, we did landscaping upgrades along the front of the property already. Uh, initially, when we purchased the property a few years ago and there was no irrigation existing, and if you go through there, it's still gorgeous because we did use hardier, less demanding plants, but, you know, still bringing that green, yeah.
Right, and the thought process was in to protect the landscape areas by providing a curb that's not easily mountable.
Right, I'd just like you to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
So made. So made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, we have one other item on this agenda, the presentation, the draft housing production plan. However, my understanding is we're running out of time producing this room. So I'm not sure what the best way to do this, whether we push you off. How much time do you need?
Um, I, I can make it work in 15 minutes if you can.
No questions.
I know how to keep my mouth shut.
If Peter doesn't ask any questions.
I, I know how to keep my mouth shut. Let's go. And I have a motion to open up the presentation of the draft housing production.
Second.
It's ironic that we're talking about production housing after a lengthy, uh, meeting to people that don't want housing.
Oh, real close. Okay, got it. All right, well, here we go. So good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Laura Smeaton, the principal planner at J M Goldson, and I have the pleasure of, um, managing the housing production plan process for you. Um, I'm going to just walk through very quickly the, the process of plans and the highlights of it. Um, and, uh, and hopefully, if you're ready, you can make a, a motion to adopt the plan tonight before it goes to the planning board. So this is our consultant team here. Jen was our project director, myself, and then we had a couple of, um, project assistants helping us out here. Next slide. Um, it was a very collaborative, uh, planning process. It was made possible through a community one-stop-for-growth grant, so there's no cost to the town on that. And, um, you know, thanks to the town manager as well. It was really collaborative, working with the staff and, um, working group for this purpose. Uh, next slide. So, um, we'll just move on to the next slide. And, uh, the working group here, you can see it was a, a diverse mix of people. Uh, we had some representatives, a wide range of representatives from various sports and committees and knowledgeable, um, members of, on all different sides. Uh, so next slide. Uh, so tonight, I'm just going to walk through those highlights and the content summary and hear any comments or suggestions or questions that you have. And then if you're ready, you can vote to adopt before it goes to the slot board. All right, here we are, right at the end. We started in, in May here and we also started with assessing your needs before we got into, um, trying to listen to the community, understanding that was part of the housing needs as well as getting input on goals and strategies before we started drafting the actual narratives of the plan. Um, and here we are now at the, uh, at the end of the process. All right, so next slide. So what did the community say in that engagement process? One of the things we heard loud and clear was a concern and a need for more, um, senior housing, housing for seniors, affordability was a thread that ran through it from all different sides about the cost of housing and, um, cost of construction, cost of taxes, all of that. Uh, desire to reuse vacant and underutilized buildings. And then, you know, there's that subset, I'm sure you heard them tonight, with, um, concerns about the size and scale of developments. All right, so the housing plan contents has some, um, required segments here. The housing needs assessment, development constraints, local, uh, your local capacity to implement those, um, changes and other resources you might have available to you. Um, the goals and the strategies, and then the action plan. All right, so some of the key things we're noticing here is, um, that the Stoughton's housing stock, like many suburban communities, is mostly, you know, detached, single-family homes, three or more bedrooms. Um, so the data is showing some changing demographics here where increasingly, and it's not unique to Stoughton, you know, there's smaller families, there's a lot, it's less and less the more traditional nuclear families, married couples with children. It's a lot of other different types of families and with that comes different housing needs. There's also an increased, um, you know, a decent, one out of three are, are cost burdened. And, and that means they're paying more than at least a third of their income toward their housing costs, and that's their rent or their mortgage and taxes. Um, and while you have this changing demographics, the housing stock, you know, it was built a lot in, you know, post-war boom and, and it's those single-family homes and things. There's a lot less of that stock of smaller type of housing units. So we're playing a little bit of catch-up and trying to look toward the future for future housing needs and the older adults and so forth. All right, so next slide. Um, so what types of housing are we seeing as, as a need? Um, you certainly could prioritize ownership units, um, um, because you do have a fair set of rentals, but those rentals do serve a need in the community. Um, prioritizing smaller homes like studios and one-bedrooms to serve those sort of smaller families because smaller units are less expensive and therefore more naturally affordable. And then looking to, you know, keep up with your stock. You're above the 10% um, on your subsidized housing inventory, but just maintaining that, uh, those, um, deed-restricted units for the low and moderate income folks.
Sure, yeah.
You talked about rentals are still important. Uh, did you do an evaluation as part of this, is how many rental units we have as opposed to how many single-family units and what may need to get going into the future?
Yes, we did. Yes, that's a part of the overall plan.
It's part of the overall plan. Okay, so this is just a synopsis of the plan. Do we have, is the overall plan, we have it and it's been sent to us? Okay.
I believe you have. This is the, and it's got a big, big housing needs assessment in there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes. Yep. Um, uh, and along with the growing share of older adults, you want to be thinking about also, um, AD accessible homes. Because a lot of the houses are older, right? They have stairs and narrow doorways and, uh, as you get older, there's more likely mobility issues, um, that come into play. So, um, that's a concern. All right, so next, uh, slide. So who needs housing? Um, I mean, everybody, really, but the, uh, the populations with some extra need here are low and moderate income families, seniors who are looking for another option to, to downsize perhaps. A lot of seniors want to age in place, um, but a subset of them are looking for another house. They need to meet some other needs, like maybe it's ADA or something else. Um, your local workers, your employees, um, especially in lower-wage sectors, and younger adults who want to stay in the community or return home to the community. Um, you know, housing is just so expensive. It's, it's hard to, um, come back and have your own place. And then people with disabilities who need accessible or supportive housing um, are also, um, have limited options and, and long wait lists for the units that are available. All right, so how much housing do you need? So if you look at the next slide, we're really just looking at, you know, what do you need to just kind of keep up with your estimated population growth? And, um, it's a slow, steady population growth. We're not expecting anything dramatic. Um, and so that equates to about 375 homes for 2030. And if you're keeping up with the kind of rate that you've been permitting over the last five years and kind of what we know is in the pipeline, you should, you should be able to meet that. Um, and we're not recommending, you know, more than just to try to keep up with the estimated demand. All right, uh, next slide. So where should housing be prioritized? We really look to your prior planning efforts, your master plan and your other, um, planning efforts to kind of, and of course, community engagement and, and planning best practices, right? Would say trying to prioritize housing near transit, near commercial to kind of give extra vibrancy to those areas. Um, areas with sewer infrastructure, uh, and, and good water infrastructure and where it's consistent with prior planning efforts. And I put the graphic on the right, just, you know, I'm sure you don't need reminding. Um, but there's a lot of things that go into how housing is, is built. And there's some restrictions, but, you know, you're able to impact the law side and zoning side, but there's a lot of things that go into whether or not housing gets built and all of it's getting expensive. So there are some limitations. Just because you can zone it one way doesn't mean it's going to, going to be built. Um, all right, so if you look at the next slide. Um, how we thought about this is we started with the need first. Like what are the needs that we're trying to meet? And then we looked at what are you saying is your vision for housing for your master plan from 2014? Um, and from that, we developed some goals and strategies to support those goals. Um, how do we try to chip away and make some incremental progress toward these, toward these goals in this vision? Um, next slide. Um, the framework we used, it's really a multi-pronged approach. You know, there's no one silver bullet that's going to fix this issue. Um, we present this to you as really a menu of choices and their recommendations. There's no, in no way, any of this is binding. Um, you would follow any of these recommendations as you wish and would follow any of those, you know, legal processes to do those as you normally would. And they're not in any priority order. All right, so next slide. Um, this is your vision from your Stoughton master plan in 2014. Um, looking to offer excellent quality of life, having distinct neighborhoods with varying housing styles and settlement patterns to serve, you know, a wide range of residents. We're all about, you know, how, housing choices. All right, so next slide. Uh, the goals and strategies. All right, the first goal is to preserve Stoughton's suburban character while expanding housing options. So that's kind of striking a balance. Um, the next slide here, some of those strategies are looking to design guidelines for mixed-use and multifamily developments. Amending the zoning amendments and, and other strategies to support missing middle housing. In the, in the plan, we define what missing middle housing is. I think a lot of the time, we're looking for other options besides just a single-family house and a really large apartment complex. What are those things of smaller scale that can kind of fit in, infill in, into vacant buildings where the existing community context? Um, looking for any unforeseen barriers that might arise to the production of accessory dwelling units. I know that that law just passed and you updated your, your bylaws there, but sometimes if you have a lot of pre-existing non-conforming lots or some other issues, um, there may be, uh, other things that come into play that, that can impact the production of accessory dwelling units. And those can be a really good option for that kind of little incremental, um, more naturally affordable type of housing that can support multi-generational type of families or, um, uh, you know, uh, lower-income people. Um, also considering, um, some sort of down payment assistance program that would be contingent, of course, on, you know, funding and staff capacity or, or having a regional housing, uh, service provider who can help administer it. But that was an interest to the community. And studying your residential parking minimums, just to check against, um, some, you know, best practices or any other unforeseen, um, issues that might come with, um, you know, just making sure your regulations are working together. So if you have a reduced parking minimum, can you park on the street as well? For example, or, um, looking where you're going to be near transit and things like that. I know you already reduced them in the downtown area, but they, they do seem a bit higher than average to me for some of the other more standard, um, regulations. So I know you definitely still need it in community. I live next door in Sharon, so I drove here, you know, it's, it's still a fact of life. But, um, if you have them to be too high, then it means that you, you're having parking instead of housing. And, and so it's all about striking that balance. All right, next slide. Um, looking to help stabilize housing, um, by providing services and resources for seniors, those with disabilities and low-income residents. So some of those strategy ideas on the next slide are to research some aging in place programs and home matching programs. Um, increasing the senior housing types by right in some select areas. Looking to, um, as staff capacity allows, have a grant-funded, um, home rehabilitation program where you can offer some small, um, grants to people looking to put in like grab bars or wheelchair ramp, or if they have some health and safety issue in their homes, some sort of, you know, less, I think it's usually less than $5,000 grant to help them mitigate some of that. Um, revisiting the housing, a lot of communities, including you, did an emergency housing assistance program in COVID. Um, and some communities are considering trying to, um, kind of have something like that, even if it's on a, a smaller scale, to help be a bridge for, for something, uh, households in crisis who might need something to, to get them until they find another job or something like that. Um, zoning for universal design just means kind of baking in some of those ADA provisions into, um, uh, you know, residential developments of a certain scale. Um, some of them do it already as part of building code, but there's, uh, increasingly, this is a trend, to kind of think about how you can do that in a more general way. And continuing to partner with organizations serving seniors and helping seniors connect to those, uh, local and regional assets that you have. All right, so next slide, uh, revitalizing. So promoting strategic reuse of vacant public and private property. On the next slide, um, looking to some of those, uh, town properties that are, you know, the elementary schools that might become surplus in, um, the next five, 10 years or so. Um, doing some feasibility and analysis and studies for if those could be used for housing. Um, uh, and we propose a couple of different options in, in the plan. That's a relatively common thing that, that towns, um, will do. Um, encouraging redevelopment of vacant underdeveloped lots and tax-titled properties. Um, we know you have a, you know, like the vacant hospital, for example, is one that we call out. Um, trying to encourage the redevelopment of that. Um, supporting adaptive reuse of underutilized historic downtown buildings near transit for housing. You have a great, um, a whole specific plan on that. So we are, we're able to cross-reference that along with, um, the Route 27 study. There's some really in-depth recommendations in that for how to have zoning and incentives for, for that redevelopment in that select area of Route 27 where you're going to be, um, sewer-ing in the, in the near future. And then continuing to look into vacant storefront tax credits to see if there's some, um, you know, uh, incentives to, to get some more, um, tenants in, in vacant storefronts in your commercial areas. All right, so next slide. The fourth goal is to maintain and protect your existing affordable housing stock. So that's the deed-restricted units. On the next slide, we, uh, you know, continuing to do your local initiative programs, so kind of those so-called friendly 40Bs on a case-by-case basis. Um, preserving affordable units as needed. You have some that are about to expire, their deed restriction's going to expire. Um, you'll have enough in production to make up for it, but keeping an eye on that and trying to preserve that as possible using community preservation act funds or coordinating with other regional agencies can, can help kind of step in and maybe try to keep those on, on the, um, on the rolls. Using some flexible zoning for affordable housing, um, you know, having some flexibility around, um, dimensions or, um, density and things like that. Uh, if they're providing affordable housing is great. Um, coordinating with your housing authority a little more. It seems like it's, um, you know, there hasn't been as much coordination as, as possible, so we see a real opportunity for additional coordination with them. And fostering, continue to foster really, public-private partnerships with developers and nonprofits to create affordable units. I'm thinking of, you know, the Hebrew Senior Life Development is an example of that locally, um, where you stepped in with some CPA funds to help cover a gap funding for, for units that are all going to go toward, you know, seniors and, and those, um, the disabilities and at an affordable rate. Um, and then considering a property tax exemption for real property offered at an affordable rate that would probably take a home rule petition. rate, that, um, would probably take a home rule petition, and you'd definitely have to assess how that would impact your, your tax rules, but that's a strategy that's other communities have, have used, especially on the, on the, um, on the Cape successfully. Um, all right, so, and then location, um, trying to encourage market-ready development near transit businesses and infrastructure. On the next slide, um, looking to do, it's a little bit on the nose given tonight, but mixed-use projects in downtown and commercial nodes. Um, you know, probably is worth looking at to try to make your mixed-use a little bit more specific, um, but, um, that is, you know, where you would, a planner would say you would do mixed-use. Um, all right, so evaluating state approval for the downtown urban renewal plan, you know, it's done, but I, I understand there's some, um, discussions about whether or not to actually put it toward the state, but you can evaluate whether it's worth that. Um, continuing to implement the sewer infrastructure expansion along Route one thirty-eight. All right, and last but not least, collaborating, strengthening your local capacity and partnerships to deliver housing solutions. I would say this is probably the most important goal, because right now, um, you really don't have as much local capacity as you would really need to be able to implement the rest of these strategies. So, looking to expand your local funding tools, you have CPA, which is a great, steady resource for, for community housing, but you don't really have any local housing, um, committees or a local housing trust or something that can help fill that, that role and improve that capacity. Continuing to build those state and regional partnerships, um, fostering collaboration and knowledge sharing across local housing stakeholders, like for example, um, some communities, Concord, for example, has a housing roundtable, so every year they sit down with all the different stakeholders who might be cited in this action plan and kind of figure out, get, all get on the same page, right? And what are we, are we doing zoning, are we not, or what can we do, um, together, so you're all rowing in the same direction every year and know what the priorities are. Streamlining your local development processes, you do a pretty, you know, good job, but it's always helpful to, um, to be very clear and have good information for people coming before you so they, they don't have to go from one spot from one place to another, and it can be very clear and transparent to everyone. And enhancing communication and access to housing resources, that's really about just getting, helping to get the information out there, um, across the board. So, you know, if you have, you know, you have fair housing marketing plans for affordable units, but there's no rules against also, you know, putting up a flyer and across town hall or something like that and letting people who work here and live here, um, have a little, you know, extra heads up that there's something available in, in the community. Um, and then revisiting the idea of a regional housing services office, that's, that's an option. Um, that, there's one locally, I don't know how effective it is, but, um, what you could, there could be a different provider. Also, you know, people like Randolph or, uh, Canton have, um, their own housing coordinator, maybe there's some opportunity to try to have some sort of shared part-time staff or something like that with a, another budding community. But really sustaining what you have and, and if needed, increasing your, your dedicated staff capacity would really help, I think, in, um, implementing some of the rest of these, especially if you're looking to do something programmatic, that can take a lot of time and, and some money. All right, so, the next slide is, the next slides are really the action plan, they're all the same strategies again, but I'll just point out, we just make some suggestions about whether something seems short-term, midterm, or long-term, kind of based on, does it cost a lot of money, is it already kind of happening, is it complicated, and then we identify a responsible party and a supporting entity. So, um, when you get a chance with a little more time, taking an extra close look at that and just making sure you agree with, um, the responsible party and stuff, where especially with the planning board is identified is helpful. We, you know, I ran this past staff and everything, but of course, we want to make sure we got it right. Um, so if we skip past all of the action plan materials, we're just down to like questions and asking for your vote for approval. Yes. Yes. Has that been discussed at all with the staff and how that was gonna go forward? Yeah, we definitely discussed it with the staff, um, and shared it with the working group and everything, Brandon, Pam, and Bill. Um, so, that's where I think, you know, taking a look at that, and, and it's really.
I guess my question is, what is the plan for them to be, for to follow along? Who's gonna maintain what the planning board's supposed to be doing, or what the zoning board's supposed to be doing, what the staff.
Right.
Who's?
Who's worrying about the spreadsheet? Right, so, uh, you know, your trusty town planner, um, is the logical one to, to try to, you know, make some movement on this, but I would say there is definitely a role for some coordination meetings.
We had, like, I was, I was one of the authors of the master plan, we had that type of spreadsheet, we maintained a lot of that for several years, and I know now we're at a point where the master plan probably needs to be updated, but we don't understand the endpoint, but nobody has kind of updated us or the board where we are and how far we've come with that, and therefore, we're gonna have other plans coming into place. I think, you know, it's just something to follow up, you know, we gotta be.
Absolutely, yeah.
Make this work, because, is, you know, we, the town spent a lot of money on you, and the town spent a lot of time on dealing with.
Well, I was grant-funded, but, yeah.
My point is, is this money, this tax pay a dollar to me and spend something.
Yeah.
And we put these things out, and they get in here, and it's nice, we ask a bunch of questions, and six months from now, somebody says, what are you talking about housing? And that's my point, is I just wanna be sure how we're gonna get this and how it's gonna go forward, and it was, like I said, there's gonna be a bunch of problems, I don't know.
Yeah, you, it'd be good to put some systems in place, right? So, what, what, right, one of the, one of the things we suggest, I would highly suggest some sort of, at least annual meeting, uh, where the players in the action plan can sit down in a room together and just talk through it. Um, and, um, I would also strongly encourage you considering some sort of housing committee, affordable housing trust, having someone come in and at least talk to you about what that is, um, and giving, yeah, giving Bill some help, you know, um, he'll, I'm sure, help, you know, um, uh, get this started, but he's, you know, there's gonna be, needs to be a little additional capacity here in coordination to really be successful in implementing the plan, 'cause it, it's more than just the planning department, for sure. Yeah, it's vote to adopt the plan. Um, it's, and then it goes to select board for them to review and vote to adopt there, and then the town manager or the chair of the select, select, board of selection signs it, um, and then it goes to the state, uh, for their, their review and stamp, but, um, uh, and that should, in theory, well, if you have one of these, it will make more grant opportunities, gives you a little. Right, yep.
So, anybody on the floor have a question?
Is this being introduced to all towns, or is this specific to Stoughton, or?
Specific to Stoughton. Yep.
Motion to adopt the plan. Second.
Aye.
All right, thanks so much. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Bill.
Can I have a motion?
Thank you, I don't know your name, thank you for running the slides.
Second.
Second.
All in favor.
I know, we're probably gonna run out the door.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, meeting's closed.